Good evening. Today is Tuesday, July 26th, and a meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board is called to order. This meeting is a work session. We are committed to having our regular business sessions and any meetings with public comment in person. But work sessions may be virtual or in person depending on the needs of the board. Our next business session is Tuesday, August 9th at 6:00 PM, and we will once again be meeting in person at Miller Elementary School. Board attendance is next. Directors Hyun, Vessel, and Avila are absent. Everybody else is present. And now I'll move to the diverse welcome message. Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. Welcome and bienvenidos to the Salem Kaiser School Board meeting. At all times, whether we meet in person or virtual as we are tonight, we strive to be inclusive, respectful, and welcoming to our students, staff, educators, administrators, board members, and all community members. We welcome people of all genders. People of African descent, Black, African American, Asian descent, Arab descent, European descent. Those who identify as Hispanic, Latinx, people indigenous to this land, and people of mixed and multiple descents. Languages spoken in our communities are welcome. Spanish, English, indigenous languages, sign language, Chukis, Somali, Russian, Chinese, Vietnamese, and many more. People with disabilities, visible or invisible. People of all religions, believers in all faiths or creeds, gay, lesbian, bisexual, heterosexual, pansexual, transgender, queer, two-spirit, or others for whom none of the labels fit. Survivors. Your emotions, joy, bliss, grief, rage, indignation, contentment, disappointment. Your families, genetic and otherwise. Our veterans who proudly serve and who are currently serving our country. Our elders, those here in this room, in our lives, and those who have passed away. People impacted or displaced by the war in Ukraine and other violent conflicts. Yes. And finally, we'd like to welcome the ancestors who lived in this land where we live and work. Welcome to the spirits of the Saniam, Kalapuya, Silets, and Grand Ron, the natives who lived in this area before the Europeans came. Welcome and bienvenidos. I'd like everyone to join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't believe there are any agenda modifications for tonight. We do want to welcome Isaac McDonald, one of our new student advisors. We will be swearing him in officially at our August 9th board meeting in person at Miller Elementary School. And so with that, I would love to turn it over to Superintendent Perry.
All right. Good evening, Chair Carson Pottingham and both of our vice chairs, members of the board. Great to see you, Isaac and Ray Lynn. Tonight, I'm going to go through multiple district updates. And I'm going to start sharing my screen as I begin speaking. As you were working on your strategic planning, I was thinking a lot about some of the other district projects that are on our list. And I thought it would be really important to update you on those and to give you some context. And then as you're thinking about putting together your goals as a board, you can also then weave in some of this district work and know what's on the agenda. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and start. The first thing I wanted to kind of center us on is our strategic plan. And as I was thinking about some of the things you wanted to tackle as a board or wanted the district to tackle, many of those fit and are embedded, could really embed within our strategic plan. So this idea of stakeholder engagement and safe and welcoming schools fits really nicely with inclusive culture and community. Some of the behavior work and the restorative work also fits under Improving Instruction. And so I wanted to be sure you think of that in terms of how you center your goals and where they really align nicely with our work. Also, in the strategic plan, across the bottom is always what we see as our key performance metrics. And you have, as Director Hyun pointed out last time, multiple years of wanting to tackle the results policy. And in the absence of a results policy that was updated, the district wanted to always continue to share data in the boardroom and did that through our key performance indicators. So those are along the bottom. Our key performance indicators, but more specifically, the data that we shared with you last year and told you we would share with you looks like this. And so the exclusionary discipline data has been on our list. Increased diversity of applicants. Remember your work session with our Director of Staffing, Brian Turner. Then, social, emotional, behavioral health. Director Sean DeGerry sent an article about school climate this last week. And one of the key things in measuring school climate is measuring it. And Salem Kaiser has done that for a number of years pre-pandemic. And of course, in the pandemic, we've seen some of those measures drop. And we should be monitoring those. Our schools monitor those through the panorama data. And so for the board, we've reported Sense of Belonging. But there's all kinds of other metrics that schools look at through that panorama survey. And you could choose to embed in the results policy. So again, that article on school climate, the very first thing they said is have an assessment and measure it. And that's what we do. And so, you know, one of our things is that dual-language expansion. And we were really purposeful in this key performance indicator document to share that second grade reading fluency in Spanish was important to us. Because third grade English, as the state reports, doesn't help us know are our students gaining literacy in two languages? So that's why we put it on as a key performance metric, because it shows value. Same with seal of biliteracy. We want to see that number increase each time. One of the things, as I was listening to some of the comments about data, I want us to be really careful that when we talk about data, we know what we're talking about and we are accurate and know that anytime you present data and you talk about data, it often causes more questions. So Director Sean DeGerry, last time you mentioned only having six African-American Black students in AP classes. Well, when we look at the data, which is still causing us to have more questions, we know that there's about 100. But within that data, do we have duplicated students? Are we counting our students that are both are multiracial? So there's multiple questions. And we should first start with, what are our AP and IBBA offerings? Are they equitable among schools? Do we have a pathway to help all students get to those? And then, do we have racial disparities? So we really should think about, as we think about saying numbers in the boardroom, being sure that we have accurate numbers. So anytime you have a question about data, ask us. And we'll be sure we present you with accurate data. These key performance metrics can change. We're going to keep at them. But if we switch directions and need to switch metrics, we can. And these could be woven into a results policy. So shifting gears, so that's our strategic plan. I can give you, you know, we could have a three-hour work session on the strategic plan because there's, you know, 100 things that we're doing under that. Also, we could talk a lot about how our schools are measuring their data, both their discipline data, their sense of belonging data, their other school climate data they have on an individual school level, which is where the work can really shift very quickly. So second big body of work is the Integrated Needs Assessment. And you have heard about this multiple times. But over and over again, you talked about in your goals, authentic engagement. Remember, this is one piece of what we're doing. We've had a couple of them already have happened. And as you think about, we are doing this work. How does what else you want to do layer in with this? Because it would ideally come out of this with maybe a new vision statement, some of your own strategic planning work, that when you layer all the pieces of engagement together, you can really get lots of good information. This is required of us by the state. So we will do it regardless. Thank you to the board members who have already begun participating with us and especially Director Sean DeGerry, who was, I think, at our early learning one today. So you can see where we're headed this month. And again, I've shown you these already. Tomorrow, we're meeting with a very broad group of faith-based leaders. And I'm hoping we'll have, I think Director Sean DeGerry is going to be there as well. So really big amount of work. It will be, hopefully, the stakeholder engagement part of it will be completed by October. So no, it'll be a heavy lift then. And then we'll back into the planning that comes as a result of that. All right. And then when I get done, I will take my slides down and let you ask questions. The next big change this year is statute requires us to have an Equity Advisory Committee. And so Senate Bill 732 passed, Salem Kaiser is a large district, is required to have that up and in place by September 15th. The law is specific in that the superintendent coordinates the nomination process. I propose finalists to you. You ultimately select the finalists. And a really important piece of that is your job is to ensure representation of underserved groups. So I will have that. I'll run, you know, the process through board leadership. Then we'll bring finalists to the board. And we'll want to get that up and running. And as I was listening to your own priorities and thinking, I wondered, is there a specific group or body of work that you want this committee to tackle that you don't, that could then report to you versus you as a board needing to tackle it? Just something that I had on my mind as I was listening. Both Isaac and Ray Lynn are members of our Student Equity Committee. And that's been going for a number of years. And I also wonder, is there a few things you might want that Student Equity Committee to do as well? All right. So here's the role of the Equity Advisory Committee. Advises the superintendent and the school board about educational equity impacts of policy decisions. Informs the superintendent and the school board of situations that negatively impact our underrepresented students and advises on how best to handle that situation. And here's the composition. Parents, employees, students, and community members cannot be a member of the board or the superintendent. And when you have an opening on the Budget Committee, you must appoint somebody from the Equity Committee to your Budget Committee. So if you have an opening next year, if we haven't done a selection of somebody from the Budget Committee, you'll need to choose somebody from that. And it must overrepresent the following students. Students of color, tribal students, English language learners. You can read the list. The last one, students from rural communities. I don't know that this one will apply to Salem Kaiser. And so we're doing a little bit more research on that. But again, you have to ensure, and that's your job, that's your role, to ensure overrepresentation. I put the definitions up. I don't know that I need to read them to you. But underrepresented refers to community groups, families, and students due to systemic barriers. You can keep reading. This definition is from the law. So the law is very prescriptive in definition in what the superintendent's role is, what the board's role is, and what the purpose of the committee is. All right. So did I get both of those? Yeah, we have both underrepresented and underserved as definitions in the law. So they're a little the same and a little different in definition. And we really need to keep that focus when we're choosing people to be on the committee. And I'll come to you with that in the coming weeks. All right. Next, another big thing. So you've got District Needs Assessment, lots of stakeholder engagement, equity committee, another big kind of lift for us this year. And now we also need to talk about long-range facility planning. So ORS 195110 guides us in our long-range facility planning. And the thing about long-range facility planning is it takes about a year and a half to two years to do. And we need to update our facilities plan every seven to 10 years. You're required by statute to look at growth, capacity, adequacy, condition, and revenue. We did this before the 2018 bond. And I believe we started it in about 2016 or 17, maybe even before that. And it took us about a year and a half. And it was before we went out for our last bond. So as we're wrapping up the bond projects, this is the time to begin that process. One of the things we did last time, when we started, we set some priorities. And you can see those playing out now. We were looking at capacity. We're looking at enrollment among schools. We were looking at safe and secure schools. So you see those new vestibules and things now, new upgraded card lock systems, special education. We didn't have special ed classrooms in every feeder area. So we would be transporting kids across town that were students with disabilities. And then CTE was one of the. And once you've set your priorities, then you hire a consultant to begin assessing your facilities based on those priorities. So you'll be looking at growth, population studies again. And then we'll want to have a conversation publicly about what do we want our priorities to be. In my mind, I'm thinking right now, some priorities around, we'll want to look at enrollment and overcrowding, to be sure. That's always something we'll want to look at. Do our schools meet the safety standards that we want them to meet at this time as we've redone some of those schools? We'll probably want to look at, do we think air conditioning is going to be important in the future? Are we going to need a new school? Some of those things will be some of the priorities. But I'm going to need you to think about, what do you want the priorities to be for our school? And do a little bit of community assessment around that. So our plan is to begin identifying priorities in February of 2023 so that a consultant can then be hired and begin assessing that. And last time, I don't think we did. I think at this point in time, I'd want to do a little bit of engagement with our community through some sort of a survey or something before we set priorities so we could get a good sense of what were our community's priorities. Previously, for us, it was pretty obvious. But I think engaging on the front end would be helpful because then a consultant can really ask the right questions as they're assessing our facilities. But again, after that, we'll need to do community engagement and you'll need to have a planning committee. Last time, the consultants gave us a long-range facility plan draft. And then the board directed me to initiate a facilities task force. And then to the facilities task force, I provided the overview of the document. And interestingly enough, in that task force process, the task force, we came in with a recommendation to build a new high school. And through that task force process, so even though you come in with a document, the task force really wanted us to give really attention to every high school and not have the haves and the have-nots. So that's why you see the high schools built to 2250 and those kind of premier features at each high school. So that's why McKay got the kind of remodel they got. And I can trace that back to the decision of that facilities task force. But that's a huge, big body of work that we've got to really start tackling. And that starts about February. What we'll do is we will lay out a process and we'll share that with you publicly, let you give input in the process. And we'll just, you know, gradually have board reports on it so you can see where we're headed and begin thinking about that. So with that, let me stop sharing for a couple minutes and just open it up for questions. My team is here. Other than one of our assistant superintendents is not here tonight. But Dr. West is here, Dr. Udo Snata is here. Our COO and HR, Bob and John are here, just to answer questions that you might have.
I'll go first if no one else. I don't see any other hands yet. Superintendent Perry, when you're doing the Needs Assessment and the Community Engagement, you had listed on the slide like faith-based groups and CBOs and tribes. How do you select which groups and who you're going to do the engagements with? What's that process look like?
So I'm going to start and then I'll let Dr. West finalize an answer. But first of all, many of the groups are prescribed in the guidance. And what I've been with Dr. West is really committed to, if for some reason we invite a group and we feel like we haven't gotten broad enough, that we stop and re-invite. So we might do multiple engagements. That happened last time with our English language learner families. And we paused and then asked the coalition to help us with inviting more parents. So it's both who we know and how we can interact with the community. And we encourage to keep being sure that we get enough people at the table. And that's why we started in July. And we'll see how the attendance in July goes. But also prescribed very clearly in the guidance. And Dr. West, did I miss anything?
Just one quick add, I think everything you said spot on. The one addition is that we have many people that work in our organization that liaise regularly with these focal groups. So for example, migrant education. We have migrant specialists and migrant recruiters that work actively in that community. So when we engage with our families and students that qualify for migrant services, we're relying on the people who do the work to help connect us with those that we really want to hear from. So yes, we certainly have some groups that are prescribed to us. And we have some connections that we maintain at a district level. But we're also leaning heavily on those who do this work on a day-to-day basis at the ground level to inform who we should bring into the conversation.
We'll have some student groups, Isaac and Ray Lynn. And we'll want some help with that in your schools. And it might even be some work of the Student Equity Committee. Because not only do we want to listen to parents and family members and community members, we really want to listen to our students. Last time in our Needs Assessment and Listening Work, we learned some really important things from our students about what was important, about what was important to make them, help them feel included and welcome and included in our school environment. So we'll be calling on Isaac and Ray Lynn to help us with that.
Thank you. And if you haven't done so already, could you share that guidance with the full board? You may have done it already, but I think it might be helpful for us to just look at that again as you engage in that process.
I'll follow up with an email either tonight or in the next few days since we have a couple of members absent tonight with the PowerPoint again and with a link to the guidance.
Thank you. Awesome. Director Sean DeGerry.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Superintendent and Dr. West, thank you. I was there in that meeting. It was a very good meeting. And with the early learning community. And I liked the format in which you shared the data and solicited the feedback with those four questions and summed it up with two questions. And Dr. West, you did a good job of explaining what those data actually means in a very nice way. So the thought that came to me was, I know the guidelines state requires us to collect on certain prescriptive way. But is there a way to somehow make that into a digital survey with all the families and parents so that they can also understand what those data means? And find, so that we are kind of educating them and developing them efficacy in terms of paying attention to. I like the way, Dr. West, you explained it. Up to third grade, they are learning to read, and then they are reading to learn. That's a very, it struck me in my head. If I, as a parent, or parents can understand what those data, why are you collecting their data? What exactly is the significance, how they can be involved? The survey itself will start engaging authentically different families and also increasing their efficacy. That's just a thought I had. It may be a little bit beyond the requirement from the state law, but it will also bring our communities together and get them all fired up and being involved in the thing. And then they can know what this means and how they can keep track of it. Just a thought I wanted to share.
Yeah, that's a great thought, too. We already have a survey that is scheduled. But as you were speaking, I'm wondering how we can either maybe embed a short video that shares the data before the survey. So it sparked some, and Dr. West, you and your team may already have that on your list. But that really sparked a thought for me about the importance of sharing verbally or at least in writing some of that. But the survey is already on our list.
Yeah, because each of those elements are very important. The, Dr. West, the way you explained it, it made more sense, what does that mean? If you don't mind repeating here for the rest of us in the community, because those are really important. Each element has its significance. By ninth grade mathematics means what? Third grade English, sorry, reading means what? You know, so if people can understand why behind what, then that probably helps them see the value. And then parents can also be working with the district and pushing the car in the same direction.
Great suggestion. Thank you.
Student Advisor McDonald?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in about student representation and this board. And I was wondering, is there a list of like established student groups throughout our district that Ray Lynn and I could get in contact with so we could just get the word out right away? Because also remembering last year in the Student Equity Committee, it wouldn't have hurt to have more people from a wide variety of backgrounds there. And so I think if we can get the word out early for that, and then also this committee we're talking about now. And if, I'm trying to think of, I can't think of too many groups at my school who I could like reach out to just because not very many exist. So would it be possible to think about like another way of recruiting students who would have a valuable perspective in these kind of meetings? And so one thing that came to mind is giving like principals or maybe staff members an opportunity to nominate a student who could have some sort of perspective. But I'm just kind of thinking off the, like real quick here, like what are some ways that we can get better representation from maybe students who aren't usually like privy to the opportunities that are like the district advisory group or whatever that may be.
Those are some really great suggestions. And I see Dr. West, you wouldn't know it, but she's furiously taking some notes. Yeah, those are some great suggestions. I don't know if we have a master list of all the student groups, but I think that's a great idea to at least get those on our list and who their advisors are. And every year, keep that updated. So thank you for that. Um, to at least get those on our list and who their advisors are and every year, um, keep that updated. So thank you for that.
Other questions or comments?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
In terms of the after, so after this engagement, to make sure I'm understanding, there'll be kind of, this is like the needs assessment. And then is the, is this district staff also updating the strategic planner? What's kind of that process? Like, who, who takes part in that as a follow-up of this engagement?
Do you wanna take that one, Dr. West?
Yeah, for sure. I just wanna clarify, I heard correctly, because you were fading in and out a little bit. Um, I think the question is, how do we engage district staff in the needs assessment process? And then also with the dis- district strategic plan? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, that portion and who, who leads the strategic plan um update?
Right, okay. Um, I'll, I'll break those into two different um parts. Although the structures are very similar, um, just because we've, we're addressing them separately, um, I'll respond separately. So in terms of the needs assessment process. We actually have a conversation coming up here in the next couple of weeks with our association leadership. Um, and we want to visit with them about how we engage their members in a conversation around the data. For example, that Director Shonda Gary saw earlier today and the questions that we have around those data. Um, part of our needs assessment process is also putting a strategic plan in front of these groups and soliciting feedback about our strategic plan. Um, for example, we're asking questions about what in the plan resonates with people and do they really like? And where do they see gaps in our plan? So we'll be collecting information through the needs assessment process. Um, specific to the, the data and our strategic plan from staff around the district. Um, there is another process in terms of how we update the strategic plan and it's actually a m- a multi-part process. Um, so on an annual basis, we go through a process of evaluating, did we actually do the things that we said we were going to do? Towards whatever goal it is those tasks are aligned. Um, an example of this was, um, last year as we were working on restorative practices. That was one of our efforts to reduce the disparities um in our discipline data between the student groups. So looking at that, we asked ourselves questions around, did, did we actually achieve what we thought we were going to achieve? If so, how does our task and our goal change? If not, what do we need to do differently or do we just need to stay the course because we need more time? So as a district leadership team, we ask ourselves those questions through a data analysis process, through um a process where we're engaging with each other um at the district level. And then we take that information out. So for example, we're meeting with all administrators. The second week of August, as everybody returns. We're gonna take these updates to that administrator group and engage with them. Um, in a similar process to say, hey, here's our updated strategic plan. Spend some time with it and identify what in this updated strategic plan do you feel really solid on? Um, that you think you have in place and you're given context um to actually support this work this year. Where do you need support and what have we missed? Um, so those are, tha- that's not an exhaustive explanation of how we go through an update process. But it's, it's a kind of an overview and an example of the iterative process that we engage in throughout the year to make sure that our strategic plan is actually aligned with the goals that we want to achieve with our students. Um, the last thing that I'll say about this that I think is really important to remember about any plan, whether it be a long-term strategic plan like ours or whether it be short-term goals. Is that um the goals we set take time to implement. So we'll often hear from people. We, we said we were gonna do this and it hasn't happened yet, so we need to do an about face and do something different. Um, sometimes that may be true, but often when we put a plan in place, we're, we're talking about shifting behaviors. And that takes time or dismantling and rebuilding systems and that takes time. So um as we go through this evaluative process, one of the questions that we ask is, have we allowed ourselves enough time for the task, for the effort to actually show an effect? Does, does that answer your question?
And the other thing I might add too is uh specifically around the restorative practice. We um know we had some pilot schools that could go in deeper and that we um had lots of escalated um behavior. And how do we, how do we stay the course? Um, to be sure that we, students have the time, staff have the time. And in that, we also um did some surveying of staff to help them with their own individual planning. Cause it is, while we can have goals of the district, uh, the magic happens in schools and in classrooms in where our kids are. And so we have to not only have big goals and um direction and district-wide training, but we have to allow schools to, to know where they are and to build um a school um culture and community. Um, as an example.
Um, Student Advisor Brennan, I saw you had your hand up. Did you wanna weigh in?
I was going to, but then uh Chrissy Perry said what I was gonna say, so.
Okay, awesome. Um, Director Shonda Gary.
Thank you very much Chair. I was going through the strategic plan and I really like all the elements. But the way I see it is these, all these elements speak of the process. When I talk about goal, you know, process is also an important thing. But sometimes the goal can also be viewed as an outcome, a measurable outcome. Where like a smart goal, which all of us use the word, right? So that there's a time bound and achievable and within our resources, et cetera. Is there any thought of kind of making it a measurable outcomes so that we can see it year by year? Then we can start comparing across the system or with, between schools or uh between communities. Cause then it kind of allows us to say, okay, we have invested this resource. We will move by this percentage in this timeframe for this community. So that's one thought I have. The second thing is, you talked about different committees, you're kind of rethink. In all of them, are there families involved? Uh, whether it is a district, uh, you know, your quality improvement team. Do you have families involved so they can give you a real-time lived experience feedback? And because some of the, we are uh reaching families to seek input. But are there embedded families involved in some of those district level commit, uh, QI committees or data team? So that they can also give you a real-time feedback so that it can help us be, make sure that we don't wait for a year and then go back and ask them what worked. Those are just thoughts to me.
Families is an important um, an important component of the engagement. And if we only, uh, it's just like students. If we only get to people that are community members, we haven't done our job with the needs assessment. And that's why the, you're seeing uh some of the beginnings, like the early learning providers. Some of them uh may or may not be parents in our district. But at some point, we, we, the next steps are to get to parents and families. So really critically um important piece of it. And then uh Dr. West, can you talk a little bit about how we measure strategic plan? Cause you're seeing a lot of the forward-facing and those KPIs are kind of some of the things we measure. But if you just wanted to give a quick minute on how we measure.
Yeah, thank you Superintendent Perry. Certainly the KPIs are how we at a district level hold ourselves accountable to what we um say we're going to achieve. Um, what I think is important to um understand is that this district strategic plan is drilled into pretty deeply at each of the department and school local contexts. And they set some very measurable goals that they're evaluating throughout the year. Um, that then feeds into the KPIs, which informs our district strategic plan. So um it's this alignment process that we go through at all levels. Um, for example, we, we have um a document that we use, a guided document that our level teams use to build out their school improvement plans for the year. And our level directors um embed within that some um directed goals for all of our schools so that we have everybody pointed in the right direction, as well as allowing the space for our school leaders to identify what they need in their local context. Um, just briefly, in addition to that, um, you will find measurable implementation goals within the di- this district strategic plan. That coupled with school measurable outcomes. Um, and then our KPIs are how we actually measure our progress towards our stated goals.
And Dr. Udo Snota, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Uh, just, just in terms of measurable outcomes from the academic standpoint, Director Shonda Gary. Um, our KPIs from an early age measure third grade reading, which we shared earlier. And that continues on in the middle school level where we measure academic outcomes for our, our, our middle school students, especially in language arts and math. As those are key indicators for what success, though, in, uh predictors for what success will look like in the future. And then of course, our, our ninth grade on track, which um ensure that we're tracking all of our ninth grader passing core classes as well as um passing at least uh enough classes to be on track to graduate. And then finally, that culminates in graduation, which is where we want all of our students to be. So you'll see from an early age, there's many progress markers, which are also academic standards, which we're using for outcome. Um, that, that we share with the, the community in the board.
Student Advisor Brennan?
Uh, so this is piggybacking off of what Isaac was talking about earlier about being able to reach other students. And what I've seen so far with our discussion is that it's, it's obviously easier to connect with high school students cause we have like the Equity Committee and also that Isaac and I are both high school students. But I was thinking, is there like any way that we could also move our focus to students who are in elementary school and middle school? Because after the pandemic, their experiences from twenty twenty to the future is obviously gonna be different than like what Isaac or I experienced in elementary school and middle school.
Thank you. That's a really good point. Um, and I haven't looked all the way down the list to see where we've um are sure to engage our younger students, but that's um super important. And last time around, we did it through having some kind of focal groups out in schools, going out to the schools and doing some focal groups with students. Um, so thank you for putting that on our radar. It could already be there, but um that's really important. Thank you.
Go ahead, Student Advisor McDonald.
Yeah, I just kind of, oh, what Rayland said and what I, um Superintendent Perry just mentioned about the focal groups. I mean, personally, I think it would be a really cool experience um to have one of the student advisors go to maybe an elementary school and a middle school. Um, and just kind of have an informal discussion about um what their experience is so far, anything that they don't like or um like. Just, I think that would be um an awesome way to kind of get some of that feedback and bring it to a decision-making body. Um, in a way that's like less formal, because I think it's a lot to, it'd be a lot to ask um of an elementary school or two. Um, maybe come to a meeting or something, but we could, focal groups or like personally, I'd be really interested in maybe going to an elementary school or a middle school just to hear from some students and maybe even the teachers as well about kind of what they're experiencing.
It'd be interesting to get um a s- a high school student from each feeder area to, to do uh one or two elementary schools. The both the middle schools and so that it didn't fall all on you and Rayland. But that would be an interesting way to build the questions, do some training of a group and then send out high school kids into our schools. That would be an awesome way to do it. Thank you.
Yeah, I love that idea. And speaking as a parent, I know when like the South um high graduates visited my kiddos in elementary, they could not stop talking about how exciting it was to have the high schoolers there that were getting ready to graduate. It's really inspiring, I think, for the younger ones. Um, Director or um Second Vice Chair Guzman Ortiz?
I love, love that idea. Um, I just had one, if you could provide some, uh Superintendent Perry, I think there was a comment, or I might have misunderstood, of when we're capturing the key performance indicator data, like some of these um surveys and assessments is, I assume or understand it to be a standard practice across the district and across schools. Is that the case? Or I think there was a comment there about it might look different at different schools.
No, it is a standard practice. Um, sometimes like, uh, so for example, the panorama survey. It is a uh fall and spring survey. Sometimes, you know, the pandemic has caused us maybe to do it at a little, little different time or only once some of those things happen. But we set district-wide um dates and windows for that so that every school does it. Sometimes a school will choose to go a little further in their data gathering and we allow that. But there's this baseline, same with, um, you know, the S-BAC tests are much more summative and don't give us real-time data. So we do a kind of progress monitoring assessments um at elementary, middle and high. And again, we say, here's the assessment you'll use so we can compare data. And so anytime we share data in the boardroom, ninety-nine percent of the time it's from every school. And we would try to tell you if, hey, this is just a sample of data, it's not the full data. But every school, and we open a window of time.
So in the interest of getting like really specific, since this is a work session. Um, I'm gonna share my screen and this is not, we did not discuss this, so I'm sorry if this puts folks on the spot. But I just wanna make sure I understand the way the district's using the strategic plan and that all the directors that we're all, you know, really getting.
Yeah, that's, I appreciate this.
Okay, um, let me see if this will work here. Okay, can you see goal two from the strategic plan? Yes, I'm seeing some heads. Okay. So we have your goal number two, implement data-driven systems. You're talking about who's responsible on your team, what the action steps are, the target date. And then you've crafted the measures that will be the indicators of whether or not we've achieved goal number two. And what you're telling us is that every single one of these measures, like ninety percent of K through five students receiving academic intervention. We're measuring that through a, a different tool in the district. And it either relates to a KPM or we can find it in the data and ask you like where things stand throughout the course of the year.
Correct. Yep. Yep. And that's, we would, um, it would be awesome to have a system where the board said, yes, we are, we do want you to report in on these and exactly how, cause we've guessed at that for a number of years. So yep, that's exactly right.
Okay, so we could potentially ask for, like, please update us on your progress towards, like progress on the measures of implementation on your strategic goal number two.
Correct.
Okay. And then you, in addition to that, you've laid out measures for three years related to each goal.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else have questions on that? I just wanted to make sure I fully understood what we were talking about. And then, sorry, in addition, then Superintendent Perry, we could use any of these measures that were particularly important to the board as we did some revisions of the results policies.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, Director Shonda Gary, I see your hand is up.
I can't see anyone else, so I can't even see myself, but doesn't matter. Because it's in that presenter mode. So the question I have uh as a thing, so as a board, we are a policy board. So it would be really helpful for board to have a measurable goal and leave the operational details to the district. Because I'm really thinking in my own head, let's say we have uh, you know, say thirty-three percent or thirty-seven percent reading at third grade level. I'm just using that number. I don't know where I. You know, say thirty-three percent or thirty-seven percent reading at third grade level. I'm just using that number. I don't know where I pulling it out. So one way to be for us as a board would be to say, we want the number to go up to forty-three percent. Uh in twelve months, starting today till next month, and then leave the operational details of how you would. Make that happen, which could be you'll do extra reading or get parents to sit and read or neighbors to sit and read and those are operational details. Because the, to me, this, so that would be one way. And so then we as a board can measure. Okay, our children reading at forty-three percent of the kids are able to read in twelve months. In twenty-four months, maybe they fifty-sixty percent will read and maybe in three years, hundred percent of them are reading at that. That would be something as a board we can really focus on and leaving that operational thing. Uh how they are doing it on a school to school or what technique they use. Because each school will have to be flexible and adaptive depending on their needs, because that's what we learned in today's uh uh session. Right? You can't use one size fits all for everybody. So that would be one way I'm thinking in my head. But we have to define, we have to def- we have to define a goal.
Can I ask, I, I'm not following what you just said, so. When I look at these outcome or these um. These measures, they are broad and I'm sorry if I misunderstanding. I thought that you said. That, like if we're using reading as the example, we want third graders to be at certain level proficiency. I, that's how I'm reading some of these measures to be like a broad measure of. Performance overall for students and it's not up to the board to. Micromanage that, right? Like you're saying, we're, we're not supposed to be in the operations. But what, like what am I, what am I missing that you're saying we're not currently doing that we should be doing?
This is what I would like to see. For example, I'm just using this as a third grade reading, say thirty-five percent. This year. So as a board, we would like to keep a measurable number saying in twelve months, make that forty-five percent. And that is what I would like to see. So as a result policy, we can come back and see have we reached forty-five percent. Or we have not reached forty-five percent or what extra resource we need to give. That's how. It becomes useful for a board to have a defined baseline and a defined number that each twen- twelve months we can measure. But if you kind of go into this system, what has been shared, what you shared in the screen, it will not tell us what's your current baseline. What's the number you would like to see in twelve months? It talks a lot about how to be implemented, but it doesn't talk about the measurable outcome of all that they are doing in the district. And it will make it important because.
Right, exactly. But what, what I think. The superintendent just told me is that if we want the data that shows the progress on any of these measures. The superintendent and her team can report it to us. For all of it, we could, we could ask for all, where we stand on every single measure of implementation from the strategic plan. So that you, we could pick those particular measures like you're saying to incorporate. Into results policies.
Well, I think I, uh let me do my best to explain it. So we have certain KPI indicators. We can certainly be totally aligned with the district's KPI. That is important. But we'll have to de- we as a board have to define the outcome that we want to see. Based on what the baseline is. That is our responsibility. And the district will continue to work on the KPI, make sure they reach that outcome for each community or each grade level or whatever that is. It is the responsibility of the board to define what is the number that we want to see in twelve months or twenty-four months or three years. We cannot leave it to the district. District is doing a fantastic job. They have systems of making it happen measurement. But we need to take a look at our, what's the baseline today and what's a realistic number that has to be reached in twelve months. And then let the district make sure it happens. There is nothing wrong in being aligned with what they are doing. They're, those are all good indicators like discipline, reading, learning, et cetera. But it is our responsibility, in my opinion, as a board to define. Today, thirty-five percent of the kids are in third grade reading level, say in ELA group. Or eighty-five percent on ninth grade are on track in math. Then we would like to see ninety-five percent next year or hundred percent. That number we can come up with, which superintendent can tell us, is it realistic or not? Otherwise, we can't have an effective result policy which doesn't define. It will be open ended and then it will lead us to nowhere.
Okay, I think I'm following a little better. That you want to set new targets for. The measures.
Correct. It has to be measurable outcome.
Yeah, no, I understand that piece.
For each of those things. We can pick all of the. KPI indicators that they are working or we can pick a few. Some for learning, some for safety, some for engagement. But we need to measure the, what is the baseline for each group or each community and then what's the outcome we would like to see next year. To me, that's how we can talk about equity and distribution of resources. It has to be measurable, otherwise we can't, we don't know whether we are heading in that direction. All we know is we are implementing it. Are we moving in the direction is where we need to. Be defining as a board that.
Yeah, I think everybody understands the importance of measuring and utilizing data, but you don't have to convince us of the importance of that. Um I think it's just about us understanding one another and which things. We all feel are needed to incorporate into the results policies. And so I'm just trying to seek clarification as we keep. You know, brainstorming and working our strategic plan as a board, which is separate from the one for the district, but they kind of tie together. So thank you for that. Um first vice chair, you know, how's pressy?
I actually think that you just answered my question with like your summary. Director Carson Cottingham, I would like, so, and I don't think I need to rehash it. So, thank you.
Feel free to ask. I mean, it might help us brainstorm more if you want.
Uh no, well, I mean, I think, I think that I'm under, I'm grasping now that like, you know. The ask is to have almost like an addition, like a separate. Measurable outcome that the board has decided to define. Um and I think that that's something we were definitely hoping to get some. Feedback on whenever we did our last work session about like strategic planning. Um so then I guess just to me, the next step would be. The board consider what KPIs are. The ones they really want to dig deep into and focus on to provide that sort of direction to the district. That's like. This KPI is at X percent and in twelve months I want it at Y percent. And if it's not at Y percent, in a year, we're gonna discuss why this hasn't happened.
Yeah, and for me, it's helpful then to know that in and to understand better thanks to tonight's learning opportunity. That there's a lot more than just the KPIs that the district is constantly monitoring. But it doesn't always come into the boardroom that may tie to some of the things we all talked about as our. Broader goals and plans that we'd like to implement as a board in the coming year to however many years. So it's just nice to have that all kind of. Coalesce, kill, congeal, I don't know, whatever the right gel, whatever the right word is for all of that. So thank you.
Well, and one example of that is this past year, we didn't only report discipline data in the boardroom. We do a school by school look at the district and I don't, we don't necess- we want to be careful that the board stays here. And know that we're doing it down school by school, because we also need to be able to coach and help a school. Without it being a big show in a public meeting too. So if, if we are looking at um. Uh the KPI at the district level, the school leader, the level director. And us know what it means school by school. So I can tell you, one of the schools I popped into a lot. Um their kids um that happened to be um which grade levels are above grade level, where. We're seeing the most learning loss from the pandemic in a school where the principals most worry because I've seen their data. And I've talked to the principal. So we're doing it all the way down to a school on any one of those.
Um first vice or second vice chair Guzman Ortiz.
I think just as a comment, um a reaction I had to some of the comments that I was hearing is just that. Or suggestion or something that I would like to see is, you know, that we do try to align, of course, with the strategic plan of the district. And that as we're looking at the results policy that we're, uh I just in alignment. I, I guess I. I think that's going to be really important for us all. Um I guess we can look at some of the specific data or like subsets of data. But. I think some of the comments that, and I don't know, Dr. Turnery Mary was misunderstanding, but it kind of just. Caused me pause on that um. Afraid of wanting to just, you know, create a whole new measures when this strategic plan is. Also informed by, you know. The community engagement as we've heard. So it's, it's well rounded in many ways. And of course, just like anything, there's always room for improvement. But I think it's a great basis and it's, you know, it's just a, it's a revised version, you know, will be a revised version from what we have here and. Just really, it's taking work um and energy to get where it is. And I think that if we can just. Try to align our efforts as most, as much as possible to be. Um strategic and efficient would be helpful.
We also, the one that um Chair Carson Cottingham pulled up is also last year's, we've made revisions to it. So part of what will come to you with that integrated needs assessment link is our updated version. Of um strategic plan coming up. And then the, the place I, I. Uh wholeheartedly agree about alignment, because what we measure and what we value from the highest level of the organization. Are, is what matters all the way through the organization. So that's really important. And the place. That um might be the place to shift, and I don't hear difference of values from you, so I'm not saying that at all, but the place that, that the. It might, we might shift is once we get to through the needs assessment, through the stakeholder engagement, then that will be some shifts. Really important again for the board to think about, are those the right shifts that they want to see to fully align? So it's perfect timing and this is a great discussion.
Director Sean Degary.
Well, if you're ready to change the topic, I just want to change the topic to the long range facility planning. And here is where I just would like to kind of throw an idea and let us think through it. Our community is very segregated. That's a reality. Uh and you know, we know desegregated pro schools, public schools is very good for everybody. And um that way, you know, our C tech program is a good example where, so when we are thinking of long term. Uh facility planning, is there any intentional way we can work around? Uh creating schools which are more. You know, desegregated and inclusive of different uh communities. Uh that way we can start thinking in terms of how do we. Uh make a shift in how our schools can at least be a safe place, even though the community. It'll probably take a little longer to be desegregated. I know it's a important topic for me, because I've seen clearly the outcomes are different once you start bringing children from different. Communities into the C tech program, you have a totally amazing result and that's been proven everywhere. So it's my ask is, you know, it is fits in with the second. Systems of oppression and, you know, that strategic goal of the department organization is.
So just a couple of comments um on that is um one um part of the um. The twenty eighteen bond and a really important community priority that we heard from our community was about. Um building schools that were um had the same space, didn't have overcrowding. Had the same facilities, you know, uh McKay not having a turf field wasn't okay. Um and so we heard that loud and clear from our community to build up spaces. Um and um so that's what, that became a priority last time and that's where you have to listen. So. Um and at the same time, from a district level, we make sure we have equitable access of programs at schools. So we don't want, while um West has a um fire science program. And uh McNary doesn't, we allow access of students to um the fire science. If they're interested. So, so our CTE programs operate a lot like C tech. And I'll tell you the barrier that's really important that we overcome in our community and that is the tr- the barrier of transportation. Because right now, we, our transportation system in Salem Kaiser is the largest in the state, serves the most geography. And we can't bus um kids enough to where they, so we try to have that interdistrict transfer, but it is a system that um. Isn't, isn't fair if you are a parent who can't. So I would also say anything we can do with um chariots. The expansion of um bus stops so that, because in a s- school district like Portland Public. Not only do they have a smaller, much smaller geography, they also have all kinds of mass transit. So as we're thinking about it, we want schools that are amazing schools in every feeder area. And then how do we build systems that when kids need a different choice, like C tech, like a different CTE program? Because C tech has ten programs and we have fifty-six district wide. So every feeder area has those programs, just like what we did with our um special education students in the last bond. We decide it's not okay to bus our special ed kids all over town. We needed feeder areas where. A medically fragile student could go to school with their uh neighborhood kids. And go to their same elementary school and go to their same middle school on the, through the high school. So it is a really important topic. And when we come forward with the facilities planning, we'll want to think about. How do we um, what are our values in that? And then take those set of values, do the facility plan. And then get our community to weigh in on what that looks like and what it might cost.
Thank you. Second vice chair Guzman Ortiz.
And I just had a quick question, because I, I heard um. Director Sean agrees speak about segregation, but it made me kind of pause like, are we speaking about racial? Are we speaking about social economic? Like separation of students. So I think there's also different impacts during, just kind of following up from what superintendent Perry said, right? Like. We're speaking about social economics. That is a, you know, a, a huge topic as well and um. But I just kind of wanted a clarity. I, I think I was making one assumption and I just wanted to ask.
I will be happy to answer your question, second vice chair. It's an intersectionality of a lot of things I see and that's how our community is segregated. It's the data. And uh, and I, so it is intersectionality around the racial line, socioeconomic and. So, and so the, the, the whole con- idea I wanted to enter language, et cetera, immigration status, et cetera. So my hope was if we can build systems or even alternative ways in the facility planning, let's say in the building, but you can have. Online access to a program that they can go across their neighborhood zones. Or they can have like selected clubs, somebody from McKay can join a club in Sprague or. Different ways we can start intentionally thinking in terms of. Desegregating and getting people to connect with each other. I feel it'll be good for everybody. As an immigrant, I've noticed when we came to south and when other parents would advocate or help. Fill out the PAFSA or college application, it really helped two of my children. Because we didn't go to college in this country, we didn't even know how to fill out a college application or PAFSA. So sometimes there is a value in rest of the group advocating and then everybody gets to benefit from that. And to, that's what I mean by that. Uh so I really agree, your question is very good question, but. They're all kind of intersectionality of it. Children of color, socio-economic, immigration status. Social adversity, they all seem to kind of cluster together in my observation. And we can have ways in which we can advocate for each other and then everybody can. And we can have ways in which we can advocate for each other and then everybody can be lifted up. I don't know if I answered you.
Thank you. All right, other, any other questions?
I do have one more thing if we're finished with questions on any of the topics.
Okay, turn it back over to you.
All right, so I'm gonna put one more big thing on your list for this year, you've got a lot to accomplish. Um, as you know, I have um retired with PERS quite a while ago, and. The next school year, I've uh talked to board leaderships that I would really like it to be. Uh my last official year as a superintendent in Salem Kaiser, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, I'm here for the duration. I'm energized to do the work and a little mixed in how to think about it, but um it feels like. Um the district's in a good place, um and it's time to think about how we transition leadership. Part of good succession planning is a really um thoughtful um succession plan. And um typically, superintendents let you know this in about November, December, but as I was reflecting on the work you want to. Accomplish this year, um doing a superintendent search um will take a lot of time, and I think you need to factor that into your planning. So um that is my plan, I've discussed this um briefly with uh board leadership. And I'd like you to launch a superintendent search, like I said, I'm fully here, I'm here for the year, love my work. And it's a little hard to think about not doing it, but it certainly feels like the right time for both the district and myself, so. I won't say more than that, because it's too emotional.
Wow.
In a super great way, you know, it's all kinds of feelings of um. Just so proud of our district and all that we've done. And it feels like I could do just a really smooth and great handoff to the next great leader, because our kids deserve it and they deserve that um. Really smooth um transition, and I, I've said to board leadership, I will do whatever it takes to help with that. So I'll turn it back over to you before I cry more.
That's really big news and um. I'm happy for you, disappointed for us, because we've only had one year on the board getting to work with you. Um, and it's, you know, you've been such an asset to. Every community you've served, but um you know, in Salem Kaiser, really, it's just your accomplishments are. Incredible, and your leadership has really moved the district in all the right directions, and I know the community. Will be forever grateful for all the accomplishments um that you've made happen in Salem and Kaiser Public Schools. And your, you know, lifelong dedication to education. Um, I appreciate your willingness to have a really. Smooth, wonderful transition and that you'll be here throughout this coming school year to make sure that happens. Um, yeah, I, I'm sure there'll be lots more to say throughout the year, but um. You know, we're just, we're really grateful for all of your service to.
The tears, the tears come for how much I love this place. I think the community's great, our kids are amazing, um even though it's personally totally the right time, that's where the tears come.
Yeah.
I just, it's a great place.
I'm glad we get you for another year. Um, so I think for tonight, I just, we need to gain sort of consensus that we, we're gonna. Um need to get a search firm on board as soon as possible, because. You know, we need to set out a timeline and it's a lot of work for our board collectively. Um, and so, I just look, I guess, for some nods of heads, like we'll get the RFP process. Moving along and communicate with the board, um we'll communicate with the three directors that are not here tonight to let them know what's going on as well. I'm seeing nods of agreement.
Yes, thank you very much. May I say a few words, uh, uh, chair?
Yes.
Superintendent Perry, thank you very much. You know, you have been a wonderful educator, and uh I really appreciate that. And uh thank you for thinking of all of us and the children and students and the district and the direction in which we can go from here. So your, your words are important, and so thank you very much. It has been very nice working with you and I really. Appreciate, thank you.
Well, I have a whole year left, we have a whole year of me still.
Thank you, thank you.
M, my role in this will be to um facilitate whatever you need me to facilitate on your behalf. Step in and out at whatever your direction is, um and I'll start um with. Um if you've got consensus here tonight of going out for a search firm, I'll start with our procurement department to put some things in order. That they will then give um to board leadership to help map out the timeline. You'll need to do a lot of additional meetings, um you'll need to do um a public uh interviewing of the search, of a search firm. So um, but, you know, board leadership can kind of get that all mapped out for you and communicate um in the coming weeks. I will um get a district message out after tonight's meeting, make sure they know that I'm fully here. We've got a ton of work to accomplish this year, this is just this little moment in time. Um, but it does give a really good runway, and I'm here for what, for whatever you need, for as long as you need that. I'm here to help you transition, that's good succession planning.
Thank you, thanks so much Superintendent Perry. All right, um if there are no further comments or questions, then um I believe we can adjourn. It is seven eighteen PM, I'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Everyone.